All right. Good morning. Welcome to our May 3rd Board of Franklin County Commissioners Meeting at 8:30.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Here.
Commissioner Harris? Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Present. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This morning, for, this morning, we are reading a proclamation designating May 2023 as Community Action Month in Franklin County. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas community action has made essential contributions to individuals and fam- community action has made essential contributions to individuals and families across this nation by creating economic opportunities and strengthening communities; and whereas community action is a robust state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperity in 99% of all American counties; and whereas community action builds and promotes economic stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities and stable homes; and whereas community action promotes community-wide solutions to challenges throughout our cities, suburbs, and rural areas; and whereas community action delivers innovative services and supports that create greater opportunities for families and children to succeed; and whereas community action insists on community participation and involvement, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard; and whereas community action is celebrating 58 years of innovation, impact, and providing proven results for Americans. Therefore, be it resolved that the Franklin County Board of Commissioners formally designates May 2023 as Community Action Month in Franklin County and publicly recognizes the hard work and dedication of all Franklin County community action agencies, signed this day by Ian Dickinson, Commission Chair. And to accept the proclamation, Teresa Tippelton from ECAN is coming, and ECAN is a huge part of community action in our communities. So you can come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Excuse me. Just to tell you guys a little about Head Start and ECAN, I know Mr. Waymeyer asked last year, we have two Head Start buildings, and we have 19 students in each of those buildings. We have 29 rental houses, low income, and I want to know that Franklin County homeless is getting worse by the day. On Monday morning, I had seven homeless calls. Right now, I have three families in motels. One has seven children, one has three children, and the other one has five children, all homeless, all homeless families. We have put them up. They have all started school in Franklin County. They're all in USD 290. So we're hoping to get these families in a better place, that they all might, the parents have now have jobs, so they will be on a better path not too long from now. So we want to thank you so much for your partnership and for helping all the citizens of Franklin County.
Is those families, is that because of there's no housing available, or is it because of finances, or both?
Both.
Yeah.
We have some that has saved money, but they cannot find housing. I have one family that I have been doing case management with them for the last three, four months, and they have over $4,000 saved right now, but they have no housing. We cannot find housing.
Jen is not here, so we're going to get this signed for you, and I'll bring it by later this morning.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any other correspondence or organizational business? No. Do we have any public comment today?
No.
Okay. Our consented agenda, we have claim vouchers in the amount of $636,544.22. Tax change orders in the amount of minus $3,795.78. Minutes from our meeting on April 19th. Special payroll from May 1st in the amount of $351.24. Special payroll from May 2nd in the amount of $650.06. Special payroll from April 19th in the amount of $5,382.50. Particip- to approve participation in the Douglas County SALT program, and April payroll in the amount of $1,333,227.43.
To approve. Second.
Commissioner Harris? Commissioner Dunn?
Approve everything except I'm standing for the meeting on the 19th.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes. All right. That moves us on to our items of business. The first one, Dustin Browning is, we have discussed this, but we're going to make it official, approve the fiscal year 2024 Adult Comprehensive Plan Grant Application.
Yes, we have discussed this. Good morning, Commissioners. Bring before you today the four grant applications that we discussed in study session a couple weeks ago. This first plan is the Adult Comprehensive Plan for fiscal year 24. This grant funding is in the amount of $622,934.08. This plan was approved by our advisory board on April 18th after we had reviewed it with you all, but I will stand for any questions today before you approve.
I think we discussed a lot of this and asked our questions. If nobody has any questions, a motion of support would be, I make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 Kansas Department of Corrections Adult Comprehensive Plan Grant Application.
Motion approved. Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes, and then we're going to move on to approving the fiscal year 2024 Juvenile Comprehensive Plan Grant Application.
Yes, same thing here. This one is for the fiscal year 24 Juvenile Comprehensive Plan. This one is in the amount of $560,449.34. This plan was also discussed in study session and then approved by our advisory board on April 18th as well, but I am happy to stand for any questions on this one as well.
All right. I don't see any questions. So affirmative action would be, I make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Comprehensive Plan Grant Application.
Second.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes, and moving on, we're going to consider for approval the fiscal year 2024-25 Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board Grant Application.
Same thing with this one. This one was discussed in study session. This one is for a two-year funding cycle now, so that is a little bit different than what we've done with this grant in previous years. For the two fiscal years, this is an amount of $183,660.14. This plan was discussed in study session and then approved by the advisory board on April 18th as well. And again, I'm happy to stand for any questions on this one.
Hearing no questions, I would, affirmative motion, I make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board Grant Application.
Obedience. Second.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes, and then consider for approval the fiscal year 2024-25 Juvenile Reinvestment Grant Application.
This is a new grant that we are applying for this year. It's also on a two-year funding cycle. We discussed this in the study session as well. For the two years, it's $146,928 even. This one specifically is going to fund a new program, a family engagement program that we are proposing, and this was approved by the advisory board as well. And I'm happy to stand for any questions before you approve.
Hearing none, an affirmative motion would be, I make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Reinvestment Grant Application.
Obedience. Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Thank you. You have things to be signed?
I will, yeah.
You will. All right. Thank you. All right. We're going to change directions then. Our next item of business is to consider updating Resolution 11-04, the Policy and Procedures to Install and Maintain Entrance Culverts in Franklin County, Kansas. David Lee?
Commissioners, we discussed this several weeks ago at a study session. Essentially, what this policy update is going to be doing is adding the high-performance polypropylene pipe to the list of approved pipes that we're allowed to put in county right-of-way. While we're at it, I'm recommending that we reduce our entrance spacing requirements along county roads, specifically on collector roads going from 550 feet to 330. That's a typo in my sheet there. And then local roads, which are the vast majority of our gravel roads from 550 feet down to 200. Additionally, making sure the resolution will require also 350 feet of site distance from those entrances to help ensure that we're putting them in locations that are safe to come in and off of the road. This, these distances will be more in line with some of the zoning and also the practicality of what people are needing and wanting. So these are, these are the recommendations that we're putting before you today.
Okay, again, we discussed this at a study session. Is there any other discussion or question anybody would like before we move forward? Okay, an affirmative motion in support of this item would read as follows: I make a motion approving a resolution establishing and adopting the policy and procedures to install and maintain entrance culverts in Franklin County, Kansas. This resolution will supersede and replace Resolution Number 11-04.
Motion approved. Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes, and then we are considering updating Resolution 8-04, the Policy for Minimum Maintenance Roads in Franklin County.
Commissioners, we also discussed this particular item at that same study session. What I'm after here, we've had two requests recent, recently to upgrade minimum maintenance roads to full maintenance, so the folks can, can build houses and comply with our regulations. What I would like to do, currently, the regulation stipulates that the landowners desiring to upgrade the road have to pay for the gravel and any culverts or bridge structures, those sorts of things. What I would like to add to that is for those folks to, to actually pay for the labor and the equipment needed for that. The purpose behind that is, we have, you know, we've got 1,000 miles of road. Every bit of it needs our attention from time to time. Adding additional miles of road seems counterproductive for our folks to spend time doing, you know, working on those. And I'm not looking to earn a profit from these things. These are just strictly paying for the, our time to do it, and the equipment rates that FEMA establishes the rates for reimbursables. When we went through the flood, the rates that I'm requesting here are exactly what we submitted to FEMA for reimbursement. So these essentially would cover our costs, no more, no less.
Plus, once they're done, we'll still maintain them and perpetuity and all that.
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly right.
Yeah.
We'll be adding miles to our inventory.
Right. All right. An affirmative motion in support of this item would be, I make a motion approving a resolution establishing and adopting a policy for minimum maintenance roads in Franklin County, Kansas. This resolution will supersede and replace Resolution 08-04.
I'd make a motion, but I'd like to say that it has two sides to that coin. Yeah, we have more to take care of, but if somebody's wanting to upgrade, that means they're building. So there'll be more, more people moving in. There'll be more tax dollars. So it's kind of a back and forth.
And this, this, even this addition is not prohibiting them from having a, you know, an avenue, so to speak, to be able to do that. It's just putting a little bit more of the financial responsibility onto the requesting party rather than the citizens throughout the county to have to foot that bill.
But I can make a motion to approve that. Second.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson, or Chair Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
All right. We're gonna, the last order of business is to consider approving the commitment of county funds for the replacement of Bridge 16 dot 6 dash 12 dot 1 on Osborne Terrace, west of Eisenhower Terrace, and it is also KDOT, KDOT project number 030C 511-01.
Commissioners, this is a, excuse me, a bridge project that we've been working on for several years now. Last, last month, it finally went to bid. Donlinger and Sons Construction Company submitted the lowest bid at just under $1.2 million. The total construction cost, including inspection services, is just over $1.4 million. Federal funds and state funds take care of just over a million dollars of that, meaning that Franklin County is responsible for the remaining, which is about $407 is what they are estimating. And so we have to essentially write them a check for that amount before the project gets started. And then if, if, at the end of the day, if, if there are funds left over, they will refund that, and if there's additional expense, we'll, we'll be responsible for that as well. We do have money set aside to, for this project. We've been saving for quite some time to have this, so we are ready to go and to move forward with the project.
Do they have any idea when?
So they have a, they will have a, an early start date. I think it's, I want to say it's June, and then they have a late start date, which would be next spring. And so we felt like in order to give us the, the most flexibility and maybe have the most success with the bids, that if we gave them a longer period of time to get this done, that we might receive a reasonable bid. And if you look on the last page, the bids were spread from the, the low of, of 1.2 all the way up to 1.8. And so I'm, I'm happy that we did this. I think it had the, you know, the results that we were looking for. So I'm, I think the 1.2 is a, is a very good number.
Once they start it, though, then do they have a certain amount of time to get it done?
Yeah, they'll have a certain number of working days established with that project that once they, once they start, they're obligated to finish within that, that length of time. I don't have the information in front of me to tell you what the number of working days is.
Any other questions?
Where are they, where are they from?
I think they're from the Wichita area. I looked that up earlier, but I can't recall off the top of my head where they're, where they are from. Yeah, Wichita. But five bids is, is a, is a great number. I was afraid with all the work going on in Kansas that we would have a, that we would struggle to get people interested in the project and also struggle to get reasonable prices, but.
I know the city is doing some work on Main Street, and they only had one bid.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's great.
Everyone is extremely busy right now. So we're, I'm fortunate, I feel very fortunate that we had the number of folks come out for us, and, and really, the 1.2 is a great number.
I'd make a motion to approve committing the funds for the bridge replacement. Second.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Dickinson?
I, I, yes, I think during your explanation, I, I'm pretty sure you said a $407, $407, and I, instead of 407,000. So just to make sure everybody knows, it's $407,000. It'll be great to get that done. I've been looking at that one for a while.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. That includes our business. We'll move on to staff reports. Derek?
Couple of quick things. Yesterday, several of us attended a mental health first aid training here in the commission chambers. I've told all of you that as an organization, we're trying to prioritize mental health, trying to lead by example and help reduce the stigma that is associated with talking about it and seeking counseling and other forms of help. The training was put on by Bryley Rivers with the sheriff's office, and he was fantastic. Great training, great use of time. Both Bryley and Kyle Laswell are points of contact within the sheriff's office, but also the, the organization as a whole. And I'm not sure I can think of two better individuals to be in those roles. Great, great people, very empathetic people. So pleased with how that went. Transitioning, we've talked recently about transient guest tax funds and also potentially using them on the historic courthouse. Spoke with Brandon about that. The, the two biggest needs over there remain, the stonework is in bad shape. It was, we tried to repair it, and this has been decades ago. I didn't repair it correctly, which enhanced the deterioration. And then also, the clock tower is still not functional. So those two things would be potential priorities. And then we've talked about irrigating and landscaping the lawn, continuing to make that a more beautiful space. So I put all of that on your radar. We'll probably put it on a study session relatively soon, but you might start thinking about how, you know, what your individual priorities would be. And certainly, there's a litany of things within the courthouse. If you wanted to restore some of the historical integrity, we could absolutely move to the interior as well. That's all I have, Ian. Thanks.
All right. Paul Bean?
Morning, Commissioners. Just to give you a quick update, I, I sent out the monthly report, but not sure all of you see that on a regular basis. Just wanted to touch a few things. We did apply for a grant to help us pay for the process to get Proximity Park as a certified site, certified site with the state, and we did receive that grant. And then we'll partner with Bartlett and West on getting that documentation done over the next few months. And I'm actually meeting with Bartlett and West later today to get that kickstarted. We have started a program in coordination with school districts where we feature basically Know Your Local Industry, and it's a letter that I send out to the school districts that talks about a specific industry. And then that goes out to the parents, juniors or seniors, so they're aware of what that industry is and what are the career opportunities within that industry that hopefully, then they can encourage their, their children to think about that if that's a good fit for them. So we sent one out just this week, and then we'll do that on a monthly basis during the next school year. So this summer, I'll, I'll kind of build that, those profiles up, and we'll, we'll keep pushing that out to the parents. Doing an awful lot of work, spending an awful lot of time on the two issues, childcare and housing. The childcare, it's a challenge. We've got a very energetic and fantastic childcare provider in Wellsville that would like to open up a center, but the timelines on these grants are awfully, awfully short, and finding property is, is not always easy. So we're trying to work very hard on that. Number of conversations with folks that are interested in childcare center in Ottawa. Worked with a development company, and they had a provider up in the city. And their, their challenge when they put the numbers to it is they can get a much higher return up in the city than they can down here. So they're trying to figure out how to make the math work. And that seems to be a consistent theme with trying to get childcare in, in our community, is the rates they can charge are lower than up in the metro, and so it's harder to make, make the math work. I've got another meeting with somebody interested in that on, on Friday. So a lot of conversations, and that's a good thing, but it's, it's a slow and difficult process to make that, make that happen. Housing, same kind of thing. We're having a lot of conversations with different developers and builders and landowners. I think we're starting to see some success on, on some fronts, and hopefully we'll have some good news that we can share here in the not-too-distant future. But I'm excited to see the interest peaking and, and picking up. So that's been good. Unfortunately, in Princeton, we didn't get the base grant, but Chairman Dickinson and I are pursuing other avenues through CDBG and potentially others to continue to try to help Princeton. They've done a good job of getting all the engineering work and ready. They just need money now to do their stormwater improvements. So haven't given up on that. As I've indicated, I'm working on agricultural outreach. Got to spend the day with Clark Winger at Ottawa Co-op, and he took me all around to all of their facilities and, and of course, had a lot of windshield time to talk about ag and the challenges they're having. And then I was invited to their co-op board meeting and got to have some more great conversations. So continuing to make those connections and network and had a great meeting. I'm sure Commissioner Stottemeyer will share about it. So I'm all still your thunder, but our CND had a really good presentation yesterday and kind of got some wheels turning into my head on some more things that we can do for our ag partners. I was very appreciative. I was invited to be part of the Emergency Management Response and Recovery Group for the county, and we went, last week? Yeah, last week, Kansas Emergency Management had a session that a group of us went to, and really good information. And I appreciate FCDC being included in that, because I think our industry partners and businesses can play a key role, probably somewhat in the response, but especially in the recovery. And that's after, you know, the cameras leave and the press leaves, and all the attention is, what are we doing? And so working with our industry and our business partners on, on what needs to happen if something should happen unfortunately to our community, partnering with our industry and private sector. So I really appreciate being included in that group. I think there's a good role for FCDC to play there. I will be at the Governor's House on the 18th. I'm a board member for Team Kansas, which is another economic development group. And we've been invited to, to dinner on the 18th at the Governor's House, Cedar Crest, and have some opportunity to visit with her and the Lieutenant Governor and some commerce people. So I'm looking forward to that opportunity. And then May 22nd through the 24th, Commerce has invited me to be part of the, the team that'll represent Kansas at a convention in Las Vegas where we're promoting growth and opportunities for industry to locate in Kansas, which obviously then gives us a strong position to promote Proximity Park directly as well. So I'm, I'm really appreciative of the Department of Commerce including me in their team this, on this particular convention. And, and while I'm not a fan of Vegas, I am looking forward to being at the convention. I was, just a, a couple of notes. We've got another round of the modern income housing. Those, those applications are due to the state on June 2nd. So again, another incredibly short turnaround. Had a meeting with some developers in the city yesterday, so it looks like the city might, might have a project. I don't want to speak on their behalf, but it looks like there might be a good application coming through there. And you may recall, we submitted one through the county last time. Met with that developer yesterday, and they're looking at maybe tweaking that request. And so I might be back in front of you again and for permission. and for permission to submit that one again. I am going to make a call up to that department and just kind of see what hurdles we had on the last app. And, and since Ottawa's received one grant and Wellsville got one of the ARPA, which is the bigger grants, what's the probability or is it worth us to make an application? Or are they going to look away from Franklin County? I don't think they will, but I want to kind of fill that out because it's a tremendous amount of work for everybody involved. I was excited, I drove out to Pomona and was excited to see Bettis Asphalt doing the roadwork because Bettis is a member of FCDC as of about three months ago. So a company that's getting business in the county is, is also investing in the county. So I was pleased to see that. And then the last thing is we did have a meeting, pulled together a meeting with KDOT in the city. We, a few years ago, they worked through a strategic plan on, on 68 Highway from I-35 to the county line, but they didn't do anything from I-35 up to Main Street. And so that's a hindrance to development along that corridor, which we're starting. It's actually, we have two potential projects on that corridor right now, commercial and housing. But not knowing where people can access them and turn off and where our light will be is and what kind of costs are involved for the developer is a hindrance. And so we're pushing in great partnership with the city manager in the city, pushing forward with KDOT to get kind of on that quickly. And so then we can tell the developer, here's, here's the deal. Here's what has to happen. Here's where you can enter. Here's where you can exit. This is a frontage road or it won't be a frontage road. And so KDOT's been very responsive to that. We'll be working quickly on a traffic study. That's the first thing. So get traffic counts and then quickly move to working on a strategy for that K-68 corridor. We do, we strongly believe that'll be a primary area for development within the city since it's on the north side. And of course, we all know everything's going on up north. So that's what I've got today unless you have any questions.
I would chime in on a couple of things he mentioned, maybe add to it a little bit. Paul talks a lot about grants and, and working on grants. And we all know that there's a lot of money out there right now. Something I'm hearing more and more of that, that upon looking into, it's just not realistic is I hear a lot, well, you all should just hire a grant rider. Every organization in the state of Kansas is telling itself, we should just hire a grant rider. Grant riders don't grow on trees. And those good ones that are out there, they're in municipalities that can pay them lots of money, more money than we can afford in this community. And so it's ironic that Dustin Browning and Brenda are both in the room because both of their respective departments apply and receive a ton of grants. And as an organization, we, we seek a ton of grants. It, I have looked into that, would love to do it, would love to help take some work off of Paul, off of them, off of other department heads. It's just, it's hard to do right now. And so it's interesting times for us because we, we're aware that there's these resources out there, but we've also got departments to run. And we have to balance looking at that bigger picture with making sure that we can attract and retain workforce. I mean, we can't spend all our time looking at bigger picture things like how we can partner with folks and get money if we've got impending staffing issues. And so it, it's an interesting, it's, it's not bad that there are opportunities out there. And certainly, I mean, Paul and I talk about this every single week, which ones are worth our time, which ones aren't. And so know that we're working on it, but it's not just as simple as saying, we should, we should bring in somebody to write those grants. That's, as Brenda or Dustin can attest to, that's a unique skill set. And then the other thing, this emergency management training, that was really good. So many of those trainings focus on response. So if a tornado comes through, what happens in the immediate wake of that? Like the, the two or three days after, what are we doing? This was the recovery. What happens in the two to three months after? How do we get businesses back on track? And Tom put a great group together, Paul obviously, and, and Ryland with the, the chamber was there. And Tom did a really good job of putting out a thoughtful group of people. So I commend him on that. That's all I have. But thank you, Paul.
Yep. Thank you.
Don't look really busy when you go to Vegas though. Leave the checkbook at home?
Yes.
The FCDC?
I, I walk right past all that crap.
Paul, I got to thank you for your legislative update. We were in a conference that day last weekend. We got a legislative update from our KEC legal staff, Jay Hall. And, and your summaries of the legis, what's going on in legislature seems like it's more current than he comes up with at these conferences. So thank you for putting out that.
That's a benefit from being on the board at KEDA. So yeah, I thank you. I, I think those are, they do a good job of a quick synopsis of what's going on. So appreciate that. Before I forget, just on a quick update on Proximity Park, we, we put together a pretty aggressive proposal for a really, really good project, gosh, over a month ago. And I continued to ping Commerce and KCADC as a partnership with them. Still no response yet from the project, from the company as to what they liked as far as what they received from the state of Kansas. So we're still waiting on that. And first hour of work this morning, been working on another project through KCADC. And the issue we're trying to answer is height restrictions. And if we need to get another FAA approval or not, we've got some past approvals. And so we're going to see if that'll work. This is again a timing issue. They want to be moving fast and want to see how quickly we can go. So still, it's, it's really slowed down as far as inquiries that fit our park. I still get inquiries that require rail or existing buildings. But inquiries for, for the park itself that are good fits have been pretty slow. But we've got two that we're working on right now, just FYI.
And how, you're going to get that?
Certification.
Do the pre?
The certification?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I'm working on. I've got a-
How long does that take potentially?
It takes several months. It's a big, big chore. And that's why it's nice to get this grant. I started working on it about a year and a half ago and just, just don't have time. It's such a heavy lift. And so we've got a partnership now with Bartlett and West and they're going to help us. And we got this grant money to help fund some of that. So like I said, I'm going to be in Lawrence later today and have a, an initial kickoff meeting with them today to get started on our certification process. Yep. Thank you very much.
Dustin, do you have anything else for us? Brenda? Brenda Fitzomar, Health Department Director.
Good morning, everyone. How's everybody? Good?
Morning.
Good. Just a couple of things for you this morning. The Health Department has been asked to do medical examinations for the men and the women that serve our country that are on reserve. I've given Derek 15 different documents to review to make sure it's the right fit for the county. And if so, I believe it's a worthy cause and an opportunity to serve more. So Derek, would you like to add to that at all?
No, I, I asked Brenda to come bring that to your attention because anytime I feel like we're expanding outside of the scope of what we have traditionally done, I absolutely want your input. We can study it if you wanted a study session, but this, I mean, it's not necessarily outside of the scope of what we're capable of historically. We just haven't done it. So I'm inclined to agree with her. Have not reviewed the documentation yet, but assuming there's no issues there, I would have no issue supporting it. Brenda tells me they have the capacity to do it, but would love feedback from all of you.
Would it be regional or county or would you expect?
Right. It's the gentleman that's in contact with us, QTC Medical Group, he's a contractor. Basically, he says a lot of them, he says Lenexa anyway, in the area.
Okay. You say there's another one in Lenexa?
No, just service people are all around the area is what they have said. Susan Pam and I have done some of this at the hospital. And so it, it went very well. It is an opportunity also to serve, but also an opportunity to make money. And of course, we would time it where we are making sure we're still serving everybody. You know, we, you can choose when you want to do it and you can choose when you don't want to do it. So it's not like we're mandated that, oh, we have to do 10 people every day and take away from things that are so important to the Health Department. So that's nice as well. But they are in dire need according to the gentleman.
But it is revenue neutral or better?
Oh, yes, definitely. I've, I've told him the numbers that I must take. So-
Really worthy cause and be a good service for folks in the county. Just sort of make sure we weren't picking up a burden to serve people in other counties.
Right. Yes. And he promises that the longer, if we continue to do it, the longer we do it, then we'll probably even make more. Now, some of the exams, because there's several types of different exams that we do. And of course, we'll do the ones that are appropriate for the Health Department. Some of them will make us a nice chunk of change. So, so depending upon it. So, but as you know, as with anything with it, you've got to get in, get your feet wet and really know. But thank you. Great question. So-
That is a great question. And, and my thought was, we may see folks from outside the county, but with the revenue that we stand to make doing this, that would give us opportunity for programs within the county or to enhance programs.
Same thing with the landfill. We serve people outside the county, but it reduces that burden on, on folks in the county to pay for that service. So-
That's exactly right.
And this, this got about because we added our nurse practitioner that-
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and so it's really cool that it's getting out, that we're here and we can do things that we couldn't do before.
Absolutely.
Awesome.
Yep.
Brent, is this for active duty reserves?
On the reserve is what, on reserve is what.
Is reserved?
Mm-hmm. That's what.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was it like a physical or something like that?
Right. Just like a physical. Mm-hmm. Yep. One time. We bring them in. They fill out all the paperwork. Susan does her thing. And of course, the, it's all electronic. It's honestly gotten a lot easier and will be paid twice a month. There's a lot of things that's changed since we've done it the last time.
This helps them determine their fit to serve?
What's that I'm saying?
Just helps them determine that they're fit to serve.
Exactly. Exactly. Yep. Any health concerns that they need to be aware of. May catch someone with diabetes that they don't know. They may catch somebody with hypertension and they're not aware. Also give them the opportunity to improve their health.
Sounds interesting.
Which could be lead over and we could help them maybe with diabetes or help them in another manner besides just the physical. So.
Yeah, I think a lot of the reserves, the units aren't around here. They might be in, way out somewhere else. So it's, uh-
Yeah.
Might be a little difficult for them to get their physicals because they only be like in their summer duty time.
Yeah. That's what the gentleman says. It's a, it's definitely a need. So looking for someone to help us with that, help them with it. So great. Great. And just the other thing, talking about grants, just have another opportunity to apply for what's called a workforce grant. Basically, it's from KDHE and it would be through the K-Gems again. I will learn more about it starting actually in June. I'll start applying in July. We should know by December. It is a three-year grant for $94,000. The goal of it is to help improve public health. There's many opportunities for expenditures. And of course, I'll be working through that with my team and with Derek's input. And of course, I'm also bringing probably to you guys as well during budget time. So, but just another opportunity that we're going to take a hold of. And it sounds more promising than all. So I'm definitely going to give that a shot. So.
This is another example though of a balance that we're trying to strike. I, I know, I mean, Brenda understands the importance of grants, yet I know Brenda's passion is not grants. It's working with folks, it's wellness, and it's just trying to find that balance. Because I, I want to let Brenda loose to do the things that she wants to do. Yet when you've got an opportunity for $94,000, we feel like we have to take it. So it's just, we're constantly working, trying to find the best use of our time.
You bet. But I have a fabulous team. We went to the governor's conference. Thank you. Our grant did help pay for that this year. But we, you know, the team came home very super excited with the family planning. And so they came out and visited us on Tuesday. Anyway, it was phenomenal. We're learning a lot of things that we could do to improve our services and also improve what they need to continue to get more grant money. So, and boy, we can do that. So opportunity to do that. So every thousand dollars counts. Now I don't have the big dollars like Dustin, but I'm going to try to figure out what he does, see if I can get that. So questions, comments, anything else I missed? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Campbell, do you have anything to share with him?
Good morning Commissioners. I'm here to give you the annual, pardon me, the annual free dump numbers we had a couple of weeks ago now for the month of April. Really, really good turnout again this year. First off, I want to thank all the city employees, City of Ottawa employees that came out and helped us. I had four of them. I really, really appreciate that. It helps us a bunch. And of course, you know, our transfer station employees out there also. Then also pulled some folks from Roden Bridge over on Friday and Saturday. Both really, really appreciate their help as well. On Friday, we approximately had about, about 100 cars. And, you know, I, I don't have numbers on that as far as actual tons because we don't weigh anything in or out on those two days. It's just too much of a paper nightmare to do that. But we had, end up having 14 total people working like bees around the place between like say the city and then, then all of the county employees. Then on Saturday, the best guestman I can have is about a 250 vehicle day, which is up a little bit from last year. But our overall, for the, for the whole deal, overall, I'm getting ahead of myself here. But overall, we had 17 people out there on Saturday to help also. It was very, the loads were smaller for sure. That's why we had a few more cars. But I don't think we ran the volume just going by the number of trailers we had going in and out of the building. You know, of course, we diverted a bunch of it up to the CND hill as well. As far as the cities go, the individual cities, there were 72 loads this year. A load is a roll-off that came in. They totaled 172.47 tons for each, and that's all the communities together through the whole month of April. And in total, that is $8,451 in tipping fees that we save these communities by hosting this free dump. You know, granted, they still have their, their fees from the, from the trash companies that, that they chose to, to have their roll-offs in town. And that is actually down from last year as far as the totals, but only about 10 tons. It was 182 tons last year of, on the roll-offs. So of course, City of Ottawa was the biggest one. They had 41 loads followed, followed by Wellsville with nine loads. And then, then after that was Richmond with six and Pomona and Princeton had four. And Rantone and Williamsburg had three and Lane had two roll-offs to, um, dumps total. So I think overall it was a good, good accomplishment. Like I said, really, really appreciate all the extra help and then all the, all the help that my folks out there did for the whole month also. Once again, it's, it's nice to have a good team, a full team underneath you. So that's what I've got. Is there any any other questions? I know Dawn was out there. I saw him. I don't know if anybody else made out or not, but so.
I'd like to have a copy of one of yours if, if I could.
You betcha.
I'd just share them with the, the town that I go to and let them know and let them know what the, you know, otherwise, what, you know, what they-
Yeah, and I can, I can break each town down. I'll break each town down in each, in dollar amounts. I've just, I lumped them all together for this, but I can, I'll break them all down for you. Not a problem.
It didn't look like he was lacking for help.
No, that was great.
It was one of the good things out there.
Yeah, that was great.
Looked like there was plenty of people to help the people at every place out there. So, and it was like you said, it wasn't lined up to the-
Nope, it wasn't. We, the, the biggest line, the biggest line we had was Saturday morning. I had six cars out on the street, but that was the only line we ever had. You know, but it was real continual. I mean, it wasn't, there wasn't any downtime for anybody. But it wasn't also, you know, just crazy, crazy either. So, but it was, it was good.
Partially you guys got the system down, but the public is attuned with the system also.
Correct, correct. And there were a few people that came in, you know, that, the county residents happy as luck knew nothing about it. And happy as luck, they got to dump for free and made their day and, you know, got several thank yous and, you know, great, you're doing this. Had a few people that came in out of county and weren't real happy because they thought they could dump for free. Oh, I'm sorry, you can't. You have to go across the scale. You know, and that's why I'm out there checking, you know, driver's licenses. You know, show me, if you can show me a resident in Franklin County, you know, I'm not a problem. But otherwise, you know, but overall, it was really, really good.
The only comment I heard was that some people had roll-offs on Easter weekend and they didn't like that it was on Easter weekend.
Correct.
But when you have an April, you almost always going to have an Easter weekend.
That's exactly right. And this is the- That's exactly right. And this is the first year that they had contacted me about that. I'm like, just the way it fell. I mean, it's always there. It just happens to be your community this time. You know, last year, you were a week different, but, yeah, so.
The only negative comment I got was some of those ham trailers are getting so bulged out. They cover them with the netting or whatever they use, covering the whole load.
Right.
And trash is flying out as they drive down the aisle.
That's ham's responsibility. That's, I mean, that's 100% their baby. I mean, yeah, but yes, you're right. Some are more, and we've got some of the better trailers compared to some of the other transfer stations around.
Happy Dave's going to pay people to come out and pick up that trash.
Is somebody talking to hams about it?
Oh, they know about it. I think they've gotten some reprimands about it. They know. But see, the part, you know, yes, part of it does come from the hams. Most of it comes from people coming in. I mean, that's where it comes. It's not the trailers leaving.
Does somebody follow the hams?
No, I'm not saying that it doesn't happen. I'm not, but the majority of that out there is incoming and never makes it to the place. You know, but I'm not saying it doesn't happen on the other side either, for sure.
But you can see that waste stream in the ditches continue into Ottawa where the ham's trucks don't go.
Right.
68 Highway from the golf course to Interstate where you're picking up speed uncovered loads.
Yep.
A lot of that in the ditches.
Yep, yeah, because they always get on 35 and take 59 through.
The hams, yeah, goes that way. So to your point, a lot of it's.
Yep, yeah, but unfortunately, you know, like I say, it's the incoming is the majority of it. All righty, that's all I got. Thank you.
People, we appreciate them. That's a big, big month for them.
Yes, yeah, this is their, as Kelly, the lady in the scale house says, this is, everybody dreads Christmas and Thanksgiving. She goes, this is when I dread. I said, well, I understand that too.
Yeah.
So, yep, yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Kyle Laswell, do you have anything from the Sheriff's Department? No, all right. David Lee?
Okay, I thought I'd give you an update, Roden Bridge update from the March numbers. So we bladed 462 road segments, spot bladed another 35 locations, added gravel to 75 different locations. We had 60 different brush tree mowing activities that we did last month. There were 11 culverts that we either replaced or did maintenance on. We had 22 ditching and road improvement projects that we worked on last month, and 185 different sign locations or activities. We still, just about every weekend, we have people out knocking over signs for some reason. To date this year, we, Roden Bridge has taken in 332 service requests. We have completed 194 of those, and we have 138 open service requests. That puts us on pace for right at 1,000 requests for the year. That will, that will go up if the weather turns, but 1,000 is fairly normal. The last thing I want to, I want to switch gears a little bit. I want to talk about that litter cleanup program a little bit more. I want to, specifically, I want to circle back to the fees that, or the, not the fees, but the the payments that we would give to the groups. I want to clarify that and maybe talk about that specifically a little bit more. The way that we left it last time, if I, if my notes were correct, we were going to pay $75 an hour for groups of at least four members, and $125 per hour for groups of at least eight or more. The, if you kind of work out the math on, you know, four people, 75 bucks an hour, total, that works out to 1,875 per hour. If we have a group of eight, paying them 125, that comes out to 1,562 per hour. I don't know if that's a big deal or not. If we adjusted the rate to $65 an hour for groups of at least four, and $130 per hour for groups of at least eight, the math works out even. I don't know if either one of those things are a big deal to you, but I would like to clarify and get some more input before we finalize this. This is kind of the last piece before we bring it back to you for final approval.
To be clear, I asked David to reconsider this. I struggle with 1,875 an hour is more than we pay a lot of our Public Works employees. And so I struggle with paying volunteers that. My thought, and it's just a thought, is 60 an hour for four and above and just leaving it there. Like, there doesn't need to be another category of eight and above. Just, there can be if you want, but, well, I guess that doesn't work out. Or if you wanted to do 60 and 120 and keep it around $15 an hour, that's a good round number that makes sense. It's less than we pay our folks, so there just seems to be maybe, I don't know that it's a huge deal either. It's just something that caught my eye when I was looking back through the program. I think everything else is fantastic, great idea. It's just the compensation.
6120, sounds good.
I, yeah, I agree.
Okay.
The people got to realize that the people are collecting that money. They're turning it over to the organization that they're.
They are.
You know, so it's not really a, it's so much per person, but it's not a salary.
You're right.
So, but I'd be fine with a 15. Sounds like a good solid number.
Okay, so 6120, and we'll have it back in front of.
Yep, we'll get that back before you next week.
And who would be the contact person?
My office.
I wondered.
Yep, we'll start with my office, and this being a new program, we'll, you know, there'll be some growing pains. We will adjust, you know, as we kind of work through, work through the process. There may be something, unexpected consequences. There may be questions that we have to ultimately bring back before you, but we'll work through those steadily. So that's, I'll make sure that's back before you next week. That's all I have today.
David, do you want to give an update on the demolition program that we?
Yeah, Dawn asked me about that before the meeting as well. So I've been to about half the communities in the county. I still have some others that I need to get to, and I need to visit with the new City of Ottawa staff that they have. I think my impression is, is that all of the communities are interested. The overall mechanics and processes of declaring a house nuisance and going through that process to ultimately get to the point to have the authority to demo the house. I think that's the part that communities struggle with. Everyone except for the City of Ottawa, they don't have necessarily the staff that are versed in those efforts, and they would have to rely on, you know, their legal, you know, advisor to help them through that process. And in each one of the locations, and Commissioner Stottermeyer's been with me, at least one or two of them. Any questions or reluctance kind of hinge not on our part, but on how do we, how do we do it legally? They have the desire, obviously. All of them recognize that there's structures in town that are not inhabited, need to come down. They're, you know, nuisance, they're an eyesore, they're dangerous structures. All of those things could probably be said about them, but you can't necessarily just go and tear it down without all the other steps and process. So that is, that is the reluctance that I've observed. But I will make it a point this spring to get out to the other communities and visit with them about it.
So at this juncture, are you aware of the program being used even a single time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we think in Ottawa, to give them credit, they've had understandable staffing issues, and that could be playing.
Absolutely, absolutely. I still believe that it's a worthwhile program and alleviates some pressure from the communities, but there are steps that they have to take that, you know, I give them general guidance and whatnot, but we can't, to Derek's point earlier, we don't have the staff time to lead that effort for them.
Let it play out a little longer and circle back and evaluate it.
Yeah.
I know the City of Princeton has taken down a couple in the last few years, so, you know, they can.
And Princeton is one of the communities that I've been to, and.
I don't think they've done anything lately, though.
Yeah, I haven't received one phone call related to it.
All right. Commissioner comments?
I'll just mention that I did go to Hades, and it was very, they put on a very good conference. It was a very nice place where we stayed. It was great. They kept everything right on, right on time, on board, running through the whole thing. It did make a long day out of it in one room all day long. Not like KC where you kind of can pick and choose. You know, you sit in one room all day, pretty well all day long. But they did, they had some very good people there, and I thought the very last speaker, actually, he thought somebody that would be, wouldn't be very contact to people, his sales tax, but that guy was great. He really put on a good presentation and made it, made it a good, interesting subject where you don't think about it much. Just, you know, you think the clerk and treasurer are taking care of it, so we don't hear or get involved a lot, you know, in that part, but he made it very interesting.
We laughed. We actually laughed at a sales tax person.
Yeah, yesterday, we did have our RCND meeting, and we had a guest speaker there. Tom Buller was the Executive Director of Kansas Rural Center, and they had a real good program on beginning farmers and ranchers. And Paul had been really into pulling in economic development with agriculture, did he already talk a minute ago? So, and he's been talking with the other economic development directors in the other counties when we meet quarterly. And it's something that takes, and we had, yesterday, we had Farm Bureau there, and at the Frontier District there, and we had the Miami Conservation District there, and they all was very interested in this subject. And I think Paul, you can always tell when Paul's interested or something. He talked out with a blank piece of paper, and at the end of the meeting, it's cleared down to the bottom, and it's all filled out, so. You know, that's usually how you can tell people at a meeting like that if they're not interested. They're writing down facts as fast as they can, you know, on that. It went really well. I think Paul's got some good ideas coming up for involving us more with agriculture, and I know our organization is behind it 100% to help each county move forward with that. One of the next things we're going to try, tackle too many things at once, but agritourism come out in the conversation. And I know there's a lot of grants that the Kansas right now, and maybe that's something we could work on too, to get some money for promoting what we're talking about and involvement with agritourism also, so that's something we'll talk about later. I did go to the Rantoul City meeting, and want to thank Paul. He's been working with him down there on trying to get some money for parks and recs and that, and he's got a little extension on it. They actually had to go out by the door and do a survey to get, hopefully get disqualified, but they did get the, they put an eight. Yeah, they put high chain up there the whole way around with dugouts and all, with money that's collected from Walmart, and dogs and eight, like a $32,000 a day, and go clear out both sides, the dugouts and the whole works. They're making progress. They have a lot to go, the bathrooms and all lights and everything, but they are working on it. Get a new contract with the fire department down there. I mean, they're contacting some people, but there were some rigging in the setting, women, and Paul brought to their attention too about the broadband that's going down there, and kind of doing a little bit of a celebration type situation between my opinion and Frank's opinion, because this is kind of happening now, and he talked to the city owner. They may do something, do a Rantoul case, to put a little money in the country, to celebrate and help them, and that's the meeting.
Well, I went to the RCND meeting yesterday. It was a good presentation by Tom Beeler, Executive Director of the Kansas Rural Center. And one of their initiatives is to try to help young farmers and ranchers get involved in the farming. They've got programs to try to get them financed, and other programs to get them started. The other thing was transition from, you know, as farmers get older, they want to transfer their farming operations to their kids or to some, someone else, and those gave a short talk about transition into those things, what you need to do with the legal inheritance and all that. Got programs to educate people in those situations. I thought it was a good, a good program he presented. And like Dawn said, there were several people there from around the counties that were in the extension office for agribusiness, agritourism, urban agriculture, which is kind of a new thing for me. When you think of urban agriculture, you think of flower pots and any windows and stuff like that. So anyway, there's an extension person that takes care of urban agriculture. Also went to the CCA meeting that day. There's about 46, 47 counties out there represented. One of the things I got out of it was the revenue sharing. Out of the 105 counties, 101 counties can, weren't revenue neutral. They had to send out letters stating the same. It cost over a million dollars of postage just to send out those notifications. They weren't going to be revenue neutral, so did talk a little bit about that.
101 were not revenue neutral, correct?
Right. Miami County actually was one that was revenue.
Four were revenue neutral.
Four counties in the state of Kansas.
Miami County was, but they won't do it again. It was tough. It was tough.
So there's something, something wrong with that situation. And anyway, I think it's going to be changed eventually to do something different because it's just not working. You can't account for inflation, basically, and unusual costs of healthcare, and all that kind of stuff, so. Definitely didn't work the first year, so go from there. It was a good conference. We all learned how to throw an axe. That was one of our entertainment things. We went to a place called The Fort, and it was sponsored by K-Works, K-Camp, our church carriers. It was cages where you threw an axe at targets, and most of us, well, Ryan was pretty good at it. I was pretty good, but I was pretty lousy at it, so.
I am, very good.
Anyway, we did have some entertaining opportunities, and that's another opportunity for somebody to have one of those venues here locally to, because it looked like it was very popular to get into this axe throwing, so.
Boy, did anyone point out the irony of a liability insurance company.
Want to throw an axe throwing night? We had to sign a waiver before we could even walk into the place.
You got decarination in your heritage? I am.
Those are hard. Those are a lot heavier than you think they are. It was a lot of work.
Elizabeth Layton Center, as we know, has been waiting to, well, waiting for a spot from the state in their schedule to receive their accreditation for CCBHC. They've been very willing, very ready to do it, very eager to, but the state determines the order they go in. Unfortunately, all the mental health centers around Elizabeth that border us have, and of course, are able to bill at a much higher. and of course, are able to bill at a much higher rate, which they put towards wages, which pretty well forces Elizabeth Layton Center to operate at a budget for deficit. And anyways, their spot lines come open and starting June 1, they will be able to, they'll have a provisional accreditation and well, well down the path of, of getting full accreditation. It just takes time to go through that process, but starting June 1, they'll be able to, to bill at that, that higher rate and not operate at a deficit. So, not draw out savings in order to be able to pay people. So, levels played and filled luck for them.
I, last Friday, went to the Dream Kitchen, or Dream Kitchen Supply Company that operates out north over, by Centropolis. If you ever have any remodeling kitchen or bathroom, they've been, they've been celebrating 30 years that they've been in business. Business like that in Franklin County, that's pretty awesome that we have that. I did go to the City of Ottawa two weeks ago to their meeting and then listened to the last two study sessions, a couple of things that are going on. And it's kind of exciting. There, that block, that's a block from the college, that two, that two block area there that's vacant, that's been in the flow plane, somebody's going to, they're talking about developing that and they are agreeing, looks like today, they're going to change the zoning to R2 to make it, the developer wanted an R3, which they could put in a dorm or big apartment buildings, but they decided to go with R2, then they have more control on what goes on. But anyway, that's exciting that they could put more housing in there. I did go to the KCCA meeting in Hayes. It was a great time. We, a lot of learning, a lot of, just being able to interact with other people. And then we did, there was a lot of talk of the LAVTR, the Local Ad-Alarm Tax Reduction Fund and the County and City Revenue Sharing Fund. These are both funds that are on the books in Topeka that the legislator chooses not to fund. And in 2022, Franklin County's part of that would have been $1,233, $1,233,230. That would have been money that we could have used and been able to reduce our property taxes on. So, the KAC is going to be working with the League of Municipalities to really push our legislators to, I mean, the legislators are talking about 1.5 billion dollar deficit or, they have.
Surplus.
Surplus. And yet, they choose not to give this money that they had promised to the cities and to the counties. So, that's a portion that we're going to be doing. We did have a speaker from Commerce and I got to talk to them afterwards about the City of Princeton. And they are going to see what the Commerce can do about helping them with that project. That's just a huge project for a small town to try to take on. And, and you would think that that's where that money could go. So, anyway, it was a great contact to make. I did have KAC board meeting on Thursday before I left Hayes. And then I went to the City of Princeton meeting on Monday. Again, there wasn't a lot new that went on. I was just thinking while we were giving our, sharing what we were doing though, that I don't think we ever officially approved the proclamation. Can we go back and do that now?
What?
Yeah. So, if Janet was here, she'd go, you need to move to approve the proclamation. So, the proclamation was 23-03. So, do I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
Second.
All right. All in favor, we'll just do that. Awesome. All right. Unless anybody has anything else, we will.
Let's adjourn.
Let's adjourn. One second.